Welcome to our Bible study at the House of Abundance, San Antonio, Texas. Let us pray. Father in heaven, we thank you for our gathering together tonight. What a privilege to have the opportunity to study your word. Thank you because your word helps us to live out the purpose you have for our lives and teaches us the path on which we should walk. Holy Spirit, we invite you into our midst as we dig into the scriptures tonight. Let the words of my mouth and the meditation of our hearts be acceptable to you, oh Lord, our strength and our redeemer. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen. In our last study, we saw how David, a man after God's own heart, fell into sin by committing adultery with Bathsheba and having her husband Uriah killed to cover up his sin. Even though David confessed his sins and was forgiven by God, God's forgiveness did not eliminate the consequences for his sins. Today, we're going to read about David and Absalom. David and Absalom. And I'm going to read 2 Samuel, chapter 12, 2 Samuel, chapter 12, verses 9 to 12, just to remind ourselves of what God said through prophet Nathan about what consequences, what the consequences of David's adulterous and murderous actions would be. 2 Samuel, chapter 12, verses 9 to 12. "Why have you despised the commandment of the Lord, to do evil in his sight? You have killed Uriah, the Hittite, with a sword; you have taken his wife to be your wife, and have killed him with the sword of the people of Ammon. Now therefore the sword never shall depart from your house, because you have despised me, and I have taken the wife of Uriah, the Hittite, to be your wife. Thus says the Lord: Behold, I will raise up adversity against you from your own house; and I will take your wives before your eyes and give them to your neighbor; and ye shall lie with your wives in the sight of the sun; for you did it secretly; but I will do this thing before all Israel, before the sun." In this passage, God pronounced judgment on David and his family. For the rest of his life, almost twenty-five years, David will experience great agony through his own children. Violence, disharmony, and murder will plague his household and kingdom. Chapters 13 to 18, chapters 13 to 18, give accounts of God fulfilling his judgment on David's life. I'm not going to read all those chapters, for that's why I said we should read them before the teaching. But I'm going to summarize the story and then say a few things as we go along, and then we'll see what lessons we can learn from this story. 2 Samuel, chapter 13, starts with the ugly and tragic story of how Ammon, David's oldest son, losted after Tamer, his half-sister, and Absalom's sister, and raped her. It was improper for Ammon to have done such a disgraceful thing to her sister, especially since she was a virgin. Marriage to a sister or half-sister was forbidden by the law of Moses. Leviticus 18:11 says, "The nakedness of your father's wife's daughter, begotten by your father, she is your sister; you shall not uncover her nakedness." When David heard what Ammon did to Tamer, he was very angry, but he did nothing about it. David should have been more than angry. He should have disciplined Ammon. David played the role of an overindulgent father. He was the one that agreed to Ammon's request that Tamer should go to his house to prepare food for him in his sight. And when such a terrible thing happened, David should have punished him for what he did to his sister. Absalom must have held this against his father. But why didn't David do something about Ammon's terrible act? Could it be because of his own sexual immorality with Bathsheba? Could it be that that weakened his ability to discipline his own son? He had not been a good example for Ammon in this situation. So, he probably lacked the moral courage to confront him. As for Absalom, he was angry with both his father, David, and his brother, and his brother, Ammon. The Bible says that Absalom spoke to his brother, Ammon, neither good nor bad. For Absalom hated Ammon because he had forced his sister, Tamer. All Abraham, Absalom did was to allow his bitterness and hatred to grow for two years against Ammon for violating his sister. This wouldn't have happened if David had promptly corrected and disciplined Ammon. Also, series of evil that followed could have been avoided. Absalom planned to kill his brother, Ammon, to avenge his sister's rape. He invited the king's sons, including Ammon, to a sheep-sharing festival at Bar-hazor. Absalom wanted David to go with them, but he declined the invitation. However, he persuaded David to let Ammon go with them. Absalom had commanded his servants to kill Ammon while his heart was merry with wine, and that was exactly what they did. All the sons, all the king's sons fled. When David heard that Absalom had killed Ammon, he was very sad. He wept bitterly, but again, he did nothing about it. Absalom fled from Jerusalem to Geshur, where his mother's people lived. He was on self-exile there for three years. Meanwhile, David longed to see Absalom. Joab knewed as David's heart yearned for Absalom. And in chapter 14, we see how Joab planned with the woman of Tekoah to bring back Absalom to Jerusalem. David allowed Absalom to come back to Jerusalem, but he was not allowed to see the king's face. Thus, Absalom's seed of rebellion continued to grow. David did nothing by way of punishing Absalom or carrying out justice. This is most unexpected. After all, David was not only a parent, but he was also a king and a judge of the people. Just barring Absalom from his presence was not enough punishment for someone who had committed murder. Could it be that David saw his own son, his own sin of killing Uriah, repeated here by his son, Absalom, and so was not courageous enough to confront him? Anyway, Absalom himself was unhappy about the idea of being brought back to Jerusalem and not being allowed to see the king. So he sent for Joab to ask him to intercede for him, but Joab refused to come. It was not until he got his servants to set fire on Joab's field that he got his attention. Listen to what Absalom said to Joab when he asked him why he had sent his servants to set his field on fire. Absalom said in chapter 14, verse 32, chapter 14, verse 32, "Look, I send to you, saying, 'Come here, so that I may send you to the king, to say, 'Why have I come from Geshur? It will be better for me to be there still. Now therefore, let me see the king's face; but if there is iniquity in me, let him execute me.'" Look who is speaking. This was Absalom, someone who had killed his own brother. No repentance, no remorse. He probably felt justified for what he had done. All he wanted was to be seen by the people that he had been reconciled to the king. Joab therefore spoke to the king on Absalom's behalf. And Absalom came to the king and bowed himself before him, and the king, overlooking his obvious crimes, kissed him. The kiss was a symbol of their reconciliation. Although they had been reconciled, the seed of bitterness had been sown in Absalom and would soon bring forth the fruit of conspiracy and rebellion. In chapter 15, we read about Absalom's rebellion. I am going to read out now 2 Samuel, chapter 15, 2 Samuel, chapter 15, verses 1 to 12. 2 Samuel 15, 1 to 12. "After this, it happened that Absalom provided himself with chariots and horses and fifty men to run before him. Now Absalom will rise early and stand by the way to the gate; so it was whenever anyone who had a lawsuit came to the king for a decision that Absalom would call to him and say, 'What city are you from?' And he would say, 'Your servant is from such and such a tribe of Israel.' Then Absalom would say to him, 'Look, your case is good and right, but there is no deputy of the king to hear you.' Moreover, Absalom would say, 'Oh, that I were made judge in the land; and everyone who saw, who has any suit or course, will come to me; then I would give him justice. And so it was whenever anyone came near to bow down to him that he would put out his hand and take him and kiss him.' In this manner, Absalom acted toward all Israel who came to the king for judgment. So Absalom stole the hearts of the men of Israel. Now it came to pass after forty years that Absalom said to the king, 'Please let me go to Hebron and pay the vow which I made to the Lord; for your servant took a vow while I dwelt at Geshur in Syria, saying, "If the Lord indeed brings me back to Jerusalem, then I will serve the Lord." And the king said to him, "Go in peace." So he arose and went to Hebron. Then Absalom sent spies throughout all the tribes of Israel, saying, "As soon as you hear the sound of the trumpet, then you shall say, 'Absalom reigns in Hebron,' and shall say, 'Absalom reigns in Hebron; and with Absalom went two hundred men invited from Jerusalem; and they went along innocently and did not know anything.'" Then Absalom sent for Hittofel, the Guinea knight, David's counselor, from his city, from Galilee, while he offered sacrifices. And the conspiracy grew strong, and the people with Absalom continually increased in number. In these verses, we see how Absalom started to work towards taking the throne from David, his father. "He provided himself with chariots and horses and fifty men running before him as he went to stand by the way to the gate." The royal treatment that he gave himself was to draw people's attention to himself as David's son and heir to the throne. The runners would announce his coming, and he would stand along the way, welcoming the people who came to Jerusalem to present their cases before the king. He would show them love and sympathy, telling them they had good cases and insinuating that his father, the king, was too busy to attend to them. Yet, he would not delegate that duty to anyone, Absalom said. Then he would add, "Oh, that I were made a judge in the land; and everyone who had any suit or case would come to me; then I would give him justice." And when he moved near to bow to, they moved near to bow to him, he would take their hands and kiss them. And so verse 6 says, "In this manner Absalom acted towards all Israel who came to the king for judgment. So Absalom stole the hearts of all Israel." Absalom was a very handsome man, very charismatic. 2 Samuel, chapter 14, verses 25 to 6, 2 Samuel 14, 25 to 6, describes him. "Now in all Israel there was no one who was praised as much as Absalom for his good looks; from the sole of his foot to the crown of his head, there was no blemish in him. And when he cut the hair of his head, at the end of every year he cut it, because it was heavy on him; when he cut it, he weighed the hair of his head at two hundred shikels, that's a lot of hair, according to the king's standard. There was no doubt that Absalom had the look of royalty. By his charm and personal appeal, he looked like one who would later be the king of Israel. So it was easy for him to later lead the people in a rebellion against his father." The reference to Abraham, I'm sorry, I beg your pardon, the reference to Absalom's long hair here provides us with a background to how he died, as we shall see later in chapter 18, verse 9. In chapter 15, verses 7 to 8, chapter 15, 7 to 8, Absalom sought David's permission to go to Hebron to pay a vow that he made to the Lord while he was in Geshur. According to him, he had vowed that if the Lord would bring him back to Jerusalem, he would serve him. And so he hid his evil intentions under a vow. The king, without suspecting him, said to him, "Go in peace." Meanwhile, Absalom began to recruit those who would conspire and sympathize with him and join him in his rebellion. He sent secret messages to all Israel to declare him king, saying, "As soon as you hear the sound of the trumpet, then you shall say, 'Absalom reigns in Hebron.'" Two hundred innocent men, who knew nothing about his plan, went with him from Jerusalem. When David was told what Absalom had done and that the hearts of the people were with him, he told his men that they should quickly leave the city. Why? He didn't even consult God. "Arise," he said, "and let us flee, or we shall not escape from Absalom. Make haste to depart, lest he overtake us suddenly and bring disaster upon us and strike the city with the edge of the sword." David seems to have been taken completely by surprise. He was unprepared to face and quench Absalom's rebellion. Still, one wonders why he didn't consult God. Perhaps it was because of guilt and fear, as he remembered all those consequences that were pronounced upon him by God through Nathan because of his adultery with Bathsheba and the murder of her husband, Uriah. Here were some of the consequences coming to pass. He must have thought like that. David and his household left the city, leaving ten of his concubines. David's six hundred men, who were foreigners, went with him. These were not Israelites, but mercenaries from different nations. They had been with David for years, and David had given, gave them the chance to leave him so that they could go back to their own country so that they would not need to fight in the coming civil war. But they refused to leave him. They had been with him for years. Zadok and the Livers also went with him. But when they had finished crossing over from the city, David asked the men to take the ark back to Jerusalem. He told them to take the ark back to Jerusalem. Listen to what he said to them in chapter 15, verses 25 to 26. "Then the king said to Zadok, 'Carry the ark of God back into the city. If I find favor in the eyes of the Lord, he will bring me back and show me both it and his dwelling place; but if he says thus, I have no delight in you; here I am; let him do to me as seems good to him.'" One cannot but admire David's display of humility in adversity by these words coming out of his mouth. As David and his men went up the Mount of Olives, they wept. David also wept. But he did not only weep, he also prayed. When he was told that Ahitaphel, his chief advisor, had gone to be with Absalom, he prayed, "Oh, Lord, I pray, turn the counsel of Ahitaphel into foolishness." A prayer that the Lord answered, as we shall see later. And when David got to the top of Mount Olives, he worshipped God. He worshipped God with Hushai, who had come to join him. Worshipping God in time of adversity is the most difficult thing to do, but it is the best thing to do. Here we find David worshipping God in this terrible situation in which he had found himself. Can anyone still wonder why God referred to him as a man after his own heart? However, David sent Hushai, his friend, back to be with Absalom, and Absalom entered Jerusalem. Hushai, David's friend, pledged allegiance to Absalom as David had instructed him so that he could inform David about whatever actions Absalom was taking. The first foolish advice that Ahitaphel gave to Absalom was to go and sleep with his father's concubines on the palace roof, where everybody could see, so that all Israel would know he was honoring his father. He did. This incident fulfilled Nathan's prediction that because of David's sin, in 2 Samuel 12:11, we read, "I will cause your own household to rebel against you. He will go to bed with them; I will give your wives to another man; and he will go to bed with them in public view, openly in the sight of Israel." Both David's men and Absalom's men prepared for war. The battle took place in the woods of Ephraim. David's soldiers were under three generals, Joab, Abishai, and Itai, the Hittite. They had rejected David's suggestion that he himself would want to be, to go to battle. But David pleaded with them. Whatever happened, they should deal gently with Absalom, signifying a father's love for his rebellious son. The battle was fierce. Absalom's army was defeated, and Absalom's long hair was caught in a bow of a tree. The mirror went on from under him, and he was left hanging between heaven and earth. He was eventually killed by Joab. When David heard that Absalom had been killed, he wept. He mourned for his son. "Oh, my son, Absalom, my son, my son, my son, Absalom! If only I had died in your place, oh, Absalom, my son." Such was David's love for his rebellious son. So David was able to return to Jerusalem after Absalom's death. Some lessons that we can take from this study. One, God's forgiveness does not eliminate the consequences of our sins. God forgave David, but he still suffered the consequences of his sins. Two, parents must discipline their children promptly whenever it is necessary. David's failure to intervene and discipline his children promptly, Ammon after raping his sister, Tamer, and Absalom after killing his brother, Ammon, led to more disaster. led to more disasters in the family, leading eventually to Absalom's rebellion and subsequent death. Three, David's attitude to God's chastisement, especially when his son Absalom rebelled against him, was that of humility, prayer, and worship. We should imitate him in our own times of trials. And four, David truly loved his rebellious son, Absalom, even though he did nothing to deserve his love. See how he commanded the generals who were fighting for him against Absalom. "Deal gently for my sake with the young man, Absalom." Also, see how he mourned for him, even though Absalom would have killed David had he got the chance. "O my son, Absalom, my son, my son, Absalom! If only I had died in your place." Unfortunately, David could not die in his place. Just think of God's love for us, his rebellious children. He did what David could not do by allowing our Lord Jesus Christ to die in our own place on the cross. Glory be to his name. Let us pray. Thank you, heavenly Father, for our study of tonight. Thank you especially for the lessons you have taught us. Father, we can see how David's relationship with his rebellious son, Absalom, reflects your unconditional love for us, even when we choose to go our own ways and rebel against your word. We pray, Lord, that we will not take your love for granted. Help us to know that we cannot win by disobeying you and that sin has its own consequences. We give you praise. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen. Next time, we shall be rounding off the story of David, a man after God's own heart. Please read three, I'm going to give you three passages. Second Samuel, chapter nine, Second Samuel, chapter nine, Second Samuel, chapter three, twenty-three, verses one to seven, Second Samuel, twenty-three, one to seven, and First Kings, two, one to four. Good night.